Go ahead and call our special village board meeting to order, let the record reflect it. It's Tuesday, July seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, and the village clock has it at six thirty-one P. M. I'd ask, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Yonker.
Here.
Trustee Panito.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Glatz. Trustee Curran.
Here.
President Vandenberg.
Present. Okay, thank you. Item number one this evening is a, it asks for a motion to open a public hearing. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. The item is to conduct a public hearing on a proposed annexation agreement for the property located at one ninety-four twenty Harlem Avenue, Lenny's Gas and Wash. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
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 opposed? Okay, we are in a public hearing. Should I give the discussion background, or do you want to give that?
Yeah.
All right, and what I want you to go ahead and give that.
So, good evening, everybody. We are here tonight, this is a statutory requirement, anytime the village has an annexation petition, we are required to have a public hearing on the annexation agreement itself. Later on in the agenda, there are items, three items, for the board's consideration tonight, which are the agreement itself, and the actual ordinance to annex the property, and a rezoning ordinance with a special use. But the public hearing is statutorily required for the annexation agreement. This is for Mr. Len McHenry of Lenny's Food and Fuel Harlem Avenue LLC, has petitioned the village of Tinley Park to annex his four-point-eight-seven acre parcel located at one-nine-four-twenty South Harlem Avenue. The property currently, property currently operates as a motor fueling facility for autos and trucks, a convenience store with drive-up food service window for Dunkin' Donuts, along with another food service tenant, Beggars Pizza, a car wash, and outdoor dispensing filling of propane tanks. The proposed annexation agreement sets forth a schedule for the petitioner to bring the property into compliance with village building and sign codes. Additionally, the agreement, the agreement does not provide any commitment from the village to issue liquor or video gaming licenses. However, petitioner has indicated a desire for both licenses, and the agreement provides a right to disconnect within sixty days at petitioner's option. So we are in the, the public hearing is, I think the next step would be, is, I see the petitioner's group is here, is there anybody who wants to address the board from the petitioner's group? And then, folks, once we hear from the petitioner, if there aren't any questions from the board members, we'll open it up to the public.
Thanks, Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm the Board of Trustees, Cass Wenland, on behalf of the petitioner, I'm an attorney from Okina, Illinois, and I'm here, Len asked me to be here, I represented him previously through the matters from the county, as well through the Circuit Court of Will County, where ultimately his relief was granted with regard to the operation of the car wash and with regard to the drive-through. What's before the board tonight, and the question is, is we have an operating gas station, it's legally operating within the county, you have an operating car wash, it's legally operating within the county, you have an operating drive-through that's legally operating within the county. All that this agreement does is brings this property into the village, it gives the village more control over signage, it does allow us to tap onto your water source, that's true, better water source, no question about it, part of the reason why we're here today, and it also gives control over this property, and the governmental control over this property, to these folks sitting in this room, and your administration that you count on. That's what's before the board tonight. There's been a little bit of misinformation about what happened and the timing of this, and Len asked me to clear that up, because I've been involved throughout this, throughout the process, so, just factually, and I think it's important to look at, these were two existing parcels in the county's zone C-two and C-three. Both of those zoning categories allowed a gas station as a matter of right. Mr. McHenry bought these properties in September of two thousand, contracted to buy these properties in September of two thousand twelve. At that time, the properties could not have been annexed to the village of Tinley Park, and this is important, because there's a lot that's been said about why Mr. McHenry didn't come to the village of Tinley Park earlier. And there was a boundary agreement at that time between the village of Tinley Park and the village of Frankfurt, that ran until late November, or November of, there's two different dates, November, December of two thousand and fifteen. So in two thousand and twelve, he petitioned the county to, and this was a request really of the county staff to rezone from the one parcel from C-three to C-two, so there wouldn't be split zoning, both allowed the gas station, and at that time for a special use permit for liquor, since a special use permit for drive-through, special permit for a car wash. After some positive recommendations by the county committees, those requests were ultimately turned down by the county in March of two thousand and thirteen. Thereafter, Mr. McHenry closed on the property as purchased under his contract in March of two thousand and fifteen. As it was a matter of right, he had the right to, he began to build a gas station, the gas station was constructed in two thousand and fifteen, began in early two thousand and fifteen, and opened in August of two thousand and fifteen. In August of two thousand and fifteen, we're still under a boundary agreement, Mr. McHenry petitions the Will County Board again, after, for this time, again from C-three to C-two for one parcel, so you have consistent zoning, again, that was a request of the Will County staff, and both allowed the gas station that was already there, a special use permit for a car wash, which was required county, under the county ordinance, and a special permit for the drive-through restaurant. After positive recommendations of staff, saying it met their criteria, after positive vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and after profit vote of the Land Use and Zoning Committee, the county board ultimately denied that in November of two thousand and fifteen, and about that same time period, the boundary agreement, your boundary agreement with Frankfurt expired. We filed suit in the Circuit Court of Will County with regard to those denials, and again, let me clear something up, the county board did allow the downzoning from C-three to C-two, so it was consistent C-two across, but turned down both special use permits. We filed suit in November of two thousand and fifteen, that matter went to trial in January of two thousand and seventeen, and the court entered its order on February twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, essentially prohibiting the county from enjoining our uses as far as the drive-through, and of the car wash, and they went up. Those were constructed, as he had the right to do so, the court said he had the right to do so, he built them. It's a nice-looking station, and thereafter, we have the petitions come before you as far as annexing the property. This annexation, as Mr. Connelly said, will give the village more control over signage, you have a list of signage that's attached there too, including temporary signs, movable copy signs, a couple other signs that will go down, it'll have them bring those properties more into compliance with your ordinance, it also has them paying certain fees for recapture to the village. Also importantly, as the sales tax is a major revenue source for this village, just as it is for other municipalities, about three-hundred thousand dollars a year, if this property is annexed into the village, will come to the village that is not coming here now. So in the end, today you have a gas station, upon annexation, or not upon annexation, you'll still have a gas station. Today, you have a car wash, upon annexation, or not upon annexation, you'll still have a car wash. Today, you have a drive-through restaurant, and either before, if it's annexed, or if it's not annexed, you'll still have that. If it is annexed, you'll have more control over the signage, you'll have control over the governmental, governmental control over your use standards, your maintenance standards, and all else regarding this property. So ultimately, the question, because, again, before anything is granted in this property beyond what's being requested, the village board would have to take further action. So, you're not voting tonight on a liquor permit, allowing liquor there, you're not allowing it tonight, you're not allowing gaming here, none of that is provided for. All that you're doing is bringing this into the village, if you vote in favor of it, in order to have that control over. That's the vote that's before here tonight. So ultimately, the question being is, do we want to have more control over signage? Do we want to eliminate some of those? Do we want to bring in our maintenance standards, our property maintenance standards? Do we want to have that governmental control over this property, or would we rather that twenty-six people sitting in Joliet have that? That's ultimately the question that's before this board tonight. We'd like the board to annex the property, allow that zoning, and if the board decides or doesn't decide to do something in the future, they can do that. But right now, this is the question that's before you. Thank you.
Sir? Oh, pardon me, sir, pardon me, sir, there'll be, there'll be an opportunity for you to speak.
The mic off?
I'm sorry, you can't hear anything?
The mic.
The podium mic.
Powered on here, is there a way to turn the volume up?
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, I'm sorry.
I can turn it off.
Okay, I think, is that?
Wait till they get the volume turned.
Oh, they're so.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, sorry, I'm sorry about that, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Is there questions first from the staff?
Yeah.
From the board, and staff, petitioner?
Any questions?
Anybody from the board care to respond or question the petitioner, and what they brought us this evening?
The tax and control sound great, I mean, they're, it's an existing building, it's there, my concern is the gambling and liquor, I've got a problem with trucks and cars and liquor being mixed, especially in a residential area. How do we, how do we stop that going forward? I mean, would you accept a condition prohibiting that as part of the annexation agreement?
Well, that's not being requested, it's an annexation agreement, and if you're, this board decides to adopt this annexation agreement, Mr. McHenry can't go out, do that tomorrow. If he were to come back, that board would have to grant that or deny that. He can't do that. You're not granting that tonight, whether you vote one way or the other.
Just, I don't know, for a point of clarification as well, I mean, they're not pouring liquor on site, this is for packaged liquor, you know, like?
Takeout.
There is no request for that tonight.
Right, right, just for, just for a point of clarification, because it seemed like the question was targeted towards that. Does that answer your question, though? Trustee Panito?
It answers it somewhat.
Sure. I understand your concern. Does anybody else have any questions for the petitioner? The record reflect, there's none, so then we'll move to item C, receive comments from the public. Certainly have a couple of those.
Good evening, my name is Linda Arnold. What will Tinley Park do in order to protect the residents, and what will Tinley Park do so that they have control over the Illinois gaming license procedure? I contacted Jared Smith, he's legal counsel at the Illinois Gaming Board. I wanted to clarify the Illinois Gaming Board Truck Stop Establishment Gaming License Procedure. He stated that the Tinley Park Ordinance, two thousand and thirteen dash oh dash sixty on record with them, only addresses the poor liquor license requirements that pertain to the VFW Hall, the restaurants, the cafes, et cetera. Since the ordinance does not specifically address any restrictions.
Miss Arnold, I'm sorry, can you just pull the microphone down a little bit, because I think that might be part of the problem, that's a lot.
Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Since the ordinance does not.
So that was the problem from the start, it was too high.
Since the ordinance does not specifically address any restrictions placed on the Illinois Gaming Truck Stop Establishment Gaming License, the Truck Stop Establishment will be able to directly apply with the Illinois Gaming Board for license. It does not need any approval from the village of Tinley Park in order to complete a Truck Stop Establishment application with the Illinois Gaming Board. This is because the ordinance ignored the Truck Stop Establishment Gaming License Procedure. This is an application that can be completed as soon as the annexation agreement is signed. The Illinois Gaming Board is the state entity that issues the Illinois Gaming License for Truck Stop Establishments. Once again, what will Tinley Park do in order to protect the residents, and what will Tinley Park do to be able to control the license procedure? As you know, on October twentieth of two thousand and fifteen, the village of Tinley Park and Speedway at one-hundred-and-eighty-third, Eightieth Avenue, entered into an annexation agreement. A condition of that approval was listed as terms relating to the development of the subject property as part of the expansion of the Speedway Automobile Service Station and Convenience Store, including but not limited to a prohibition on video gaming at the service station. No future application for video gaming was allowed for this location. Essentially, Speedway agreed to never apply for an Illinois Gaming License for their Truck Stop Establishment with the Illinois Gaming Board. My question to you is, will the Tinley Park Village Board place the same condition of prohibition on the annexation agreement with Gas and Wash? This Truck Stop Establishment directly above single-family homes, Speedway is in an industrial area, why would you allow this in a residential area when you require the Speedway annexation agreement to include the condition of prohibition on video gambling? Isn't that asking for trouble? What kind of precedent are you setting when you've already denied it at another location? Since it has been mentioned that now Tinley Park can control ordinances if it is annexed in, I respectfully ask the following question: Exactly how will the village of Tinley Park uphold the following ordinances entered into the village of Tinley Park Code of Ordinances? It is listed as Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter Ninety-Eight, nuisances, Number Ninety-eight Point O-two, nuisances enumerated, Item K, to operate a truck engine, or to allow a truck engine to be operated on one's property between the hours of ten P. M. and seven A. M. in any place within the village in which the majority of the buildings within a radius of three hundred feet are used exclusively for residential purposes. Item L, to operate a loading dock by actively performing loading and/or unloading functions in relation thereto between the hours of ten P. M. and six A. M. in any place within the village in which the majority of the buildings within a radius of three hundred feet are used exclusively for residential purposes. Item L, to operate a loading dock by actively performing loading and/or unloading functions in relation thereto between the hours of ten P. M. and six A. M. in any place within the village in which the majority of the buildings within a radius of three hundred feet are used exclusively for residential services. Gas and Wash currently operates the truck fueling twenty-four hours a day. The listed ordinance prohibits operating truck engines between ten P. M. and seven A. M., and receiving deliveries between ten P. M. and six A. M. The Gas and Wash property directly above seven residential properties and at least an additional three to four residential properties are within that radius of three hundred feet. Will the annexation agreement specifically be put in writing to limit the hours of truck fueling, and also the truck access lane during the hours of ten P. M. and six A. M.? Will the annexation agreement limit the hours that the business will receive deliveries? This needs to be put in writing as part of the annexation agreement. You know that it operates twenty-four hours a day, it needs to be put in writing. Given the limit on the twenty-four-hour truck fueling, and if the gambling and the alcohol is off the table, what is the received income Tinley Park will earn? Also, how much fuel income is lost at the other gas station within Tinley Park if they're going to this gas station? Fuel cannot be hoarded, it can't be stockpiled. Please also realize that a car wash is a service, sales tax is not paid or earned on a service in Illinois. So please, take a look at those numbers, what are those true numbers? I greatly appreciate your consideration in this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a quick address before we take the next comment, you might notice that that extended the period of time typically in a board meeting for public comments, so for public hearings, we don't set a time limit. So I would just ask that, I know that there's a number of concerns that are out here, and I'm certain that everyone has the same one, if we could limit it to the redundancies, and maybe if you have a specific fact that wasn't shared prior, if you could address that to the board, I'm not by any means saying you're not welcome to speak, I just would like to, for the, for the purposes of keeping the meeting flowing in a proper manner, if we could just keep away the redundancies, I would greatly appreciate it. Ma'am?
My name is Angela Zamuda. We now know that Mr. McHenry can easily receive a gaming license via application straight from the Illinois Gaming Board. Once the annexation takes place, the majority of our residents are adamantly opposed to this annexation of twenty-four-hour gaming and liquor services, since it increases traffic plus adds health and safety issues. It is important to remember, with twenty-four-hour gaming and liquor sales, the annexation will increase, increase traffic, which is a major health concern. For example, according to a recent EPA report on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, in the research of near roadway and other near-source air pollution, living and working near sources of air pollution can lead to higher exposure to air contaminants, many of which contribute to the adverse effects, including reduced lung function, asthma, cardiovascular disease, and premature death. Although the traffic study was conducted by the village in March, there was no mention to the stacking of cars on our residential streets as we exit and enter our area. They say a picture is worth a thousand words, so I would like to present to the board a picture of what we face. If you will get this to the board. This is a visual of five trucks, some refueling, some parking, and of course, a semi-trailer pulling into the truck refueling part of the station, blocking entrances on and off our residential street. No doubt that if the annexation is passed, we will also ask, it will increase the traffic. We also ask why there wasn't information regarding the truck traffic in the study completed by the village. One can only imagine, with a proposal such as Truck Stop, open twenty-four hours, seven days a week, gaming and liquor sales, how much more traffic our residential community will face, once Mr. McHenry advertises the facility. Also, if this becomes a Truck Stop, does that mean that trucks standing and idling will be prohibited? What about the unknown drivers exiting I-80 on all hours of the night? As you know, that the proposed gaming and liquor sales will take away profits from the existing businesses already in our village, we continually ask, who will monitor these gaming machines when the young teens are in the convenience store? Lastly, please know that the joy and comfort as homeowners will never be the same, and our property values will continue to decline if the Truck Stop is ultimately approved. So we say to you, our elected officials, on behalf of all the residents and taxpayers in this community, say no to this annexation unless the suggested amendment of no gaming and no liquor becomes part of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Nord Wolzon, resident Tinley Park. Could I first ask if any of you live south of one-hundred-and-eighty-third Street? By a show of hands? So I'll take that as a no.
I'm on the east side.
I'm sorry?
I'm on the east side.
South of one-hundred-and-eighty-third Street?
Hundred-and-eighty-first.
Okay. So, we're kind of like the forgotten part of Tinley Park, even though we, we, you know, pay a huge amount of taxes into this city. Our kids don't go to any schools in Tinley Park, they go to the Frankfurt schools, we don't get supported like the rest of the village does. So, there's, let's just talk common sense. We all throw numbers out there, it gets aggravating because we hear this three-hundred-thousand to four-hundred-thousand dollar number being thrown around. Have any of you researched that to see if it's factual? Have you looked at tax returns? Have you looked at sales tax figures? Does anybody know that that's a factual figure? So it's a perception, but the problem is perception becomes reality. I believe I've even read quotes from the mayor in the local paper saying that would be a huge cash grab for Tinley Park. Well, that's what this is all about, it's about a cash grab. Tinley Park wants a cash grab, he wants a cash grab. The annexation's for one reason and one reason only, and we all know it, he wants a gaming license and a liquor license. So, we have a gas station there right now and a car wash, it's going to be there, that's fine, we all accept that. If we give a gaming license and a liquor license, the only way they can get that is through annexation. So even though that's not being voted on right now, let's have enough common sense to know we're trying to get to step B by doing step A. If step A stops it, I guarantee you, he's going to, he's not going to pursue it at all. He wants to get a gaming license and a liquor license. We don't need more video gaming, and we don't need more liquor sales, Tinley Park has plenty of it. Have any of you had any residents request additional locations to be able to purchase Have any of you had any residents contact you requesting additional places to do video So while the building is there, if you grant that, we all suffer, all the people in this room and all of our neighbors, we gain nothing. Tinley Park is going to get some money, it's not going to be three hundred, and it's not going to be four hundred thousand dollars, that's just a simple fact, like other people have said. If you take away from some and give to another, that's not a big recoup of money for village, for the village, it just spreads it around a little bit more. I know not too long ago, the Sweet Spot, which is over by the Odyssey Fun World, applied for a gaming license to try to be competitive and stay in business, you granted it to them. All it's going to do is steal more business from them, and hurt a business that's been a longstanding good partner with the village. If you look at the history with the signage and everything that happened with this gas station before, look at all the letters, have you all seen those before from the previous mayors, previous administrations, asking for them to cooperate with local ordinances for signage? He chose not to. So if their, his attorney wants to talk facts, the fact is, he did not do what the village wanted to, because he didn't have to. He wanted to do what he wanted to do, and he didn't need any approval from Tinley Park, Frankfurt, Okina to do it. So that's fine, he did what he was able to do. We accepted the gas station, Truck Stop, Car Wash, whatever you want to call it, into our neighborhood. Now, we're getting backdoored by saying, okay, I want a gaming license and I want a liquor license. So again, don't be fooled by an annexation agreement that's not going to take you from A to B. Because if you say right now the annexation agreement is going to have a stipulation, there will absolutely be no video gaming, and there will be no liquor license, it will be a dead issue. I think we could ask him right now, would you pursue it if you were unable to get a gaming license or liquor license?
We'll keep the comments, we'll keep the comments correct to the board.
Okay, I'll let one of you guys ask him that question. So when you consider that, again, I, I like to deal with common sense, people want to do studies and this and that, it's simple. If there's more business, there's more crime, if there's more business, there's more traffic. More traffic, more crime hurts residential neighborhoods. We have the gas station, it's good enough, none of us need another place to buy liquor, none of us need another place to do video gaming. So don't rob Peter to pay Paul, and also, if you do agree to annex them, put something in writing saying, we want a guaranteed three-hundred to four-hundred-thousand dollar, you know, investment in our village, whatever number's going to be thrown out there. If they fall short, make them pay it. Again, we're the only ones that lose, you guys all stand to win, and he stands to win. We gain nothing. We get more crime, more pollution, more noise, more traffic, everything's bad for us, and we're the ones that live right there. So I hope you guys have common sense, don't be misled, think about the people sitting in this room, and remember, we all vote, and you're mostly, I believe, our elected officials. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Glenn Arnold. It's interesting that this is being framed as the village having more control over this property, when annexation would undoubtedly give the village less control over not only this property, but the rest of the properties within Tinley Park. It is leaving itself open to years of legal challenges from other businesses that would be wanting the same preferential treatment that the board would be allowing to this annexation. If this annexation is allowed, any business can set up shop on the border of Tinley Park and then demand annexation, and they would be, have an extremely strong case based on the number of precedents that are being established with this annexation request. If the, if allowed to proceed, the village will be saying for the first time ever that the village is allowing these following precedents, twenty-four-hour gambling. Is the village aware that they will have no control over the gambling license, that the state will have control over that? Mayor Vandenberg, are you aware of that?
Can I, can I, can I answer that?
Yes.
Okay, so it's my understanding that, that we do have a, a separate video gaming license that the village issues, and I, and Ms. Arnold, and I haven't talked to the state about it, but I can tell you this, the intent up here is to have control. So if that is the case, and in the, it's a first reading tonight, the annexation agreement is approved tonight, and there needs to be a code change to make sure that not only the liquor license and the video gaming license has to come back before this board, that is certainly the intent of this board, and if there needs to be a code change, if it passes first reading tonight, my recommend, my recommendation to this board will be to also amend whatever we're missing in our video gaming license to make sure that they have to come back so that control is here.
Thank you. Again, if the gambling is allowed, this would be the first gambling next to a single-family residence. If liquor sales are allowed, it will be the first liquor sales and a gas station in Tinley Park. The sign ordinances can be ignored completely. Two former mayors and a trustee were in constant contact with the applicant about the signing requirements, and he completely ignored them, and now he wants to come in and be grandfathered in. He completely ignored those, those requests. The parking requirements. The parking requirements have been bent and ignored. The first ever legally designated truck stop in Tinley Park. Diesel engine servicing within 300 feet of residential homes for the first time in Tinley Park. Not only will the village be setting these precedents, it will be disregarding the recommendations of its own planning commission. Furthermore, it will be disregarding its own precedents in regard to truck stops and gambling establishments when comparing this location to the Speedway on 80th Avenue. Members of this very board were on the board that required a Speedway to forego a gambling license when requesting annexation. To do otherwise now would be arbitrary. You have heard from dozens of residents, your own planning commission, letters from past mayors of Tinley Park, all for a unanimous agreement that the village should not allow this annexation agreement. Unless employed by the applicant, this village has heard not a single voice in favor of this agreement during public comments at any point during this entire process. Listen to your residents, listen to your planning commissioners, listen to the past mayors of Tinley Park, and reject this annexation agreement. At the very least, I ask you, Mayor Vandenberg, to make this applicant enter into the same agreement that you required for the Speedway on 80th Avenue. Thank you.
Before you speak, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do we, he mentioned 300 feet from homes, can we look that ordinance up?
We can, I mean.
Okay, yeah, could you put that on?
Oh, it's on my list, yeah, we'll look at that as well, absolutely, it's a great, it's a good point.
Good evening, just a quick question, in the paragraph here, it says the agreement does not provide any commitment from the village to issue liquor or video gaming licenses, however petitioner has indicated a desire for both, and the agreement provides a right to disconnect within 60 days at the petitioner's option. Can you explain that, Ken?
Yeah, so, you know, the opposite of annexation is a disconnection. So, the agreement does allow the petitioner a right to, if they were approved, if they get annexation, within 60 days to say, we don't want to be here, we disconnect.
Okay.
I mean, so, it's actually the exact opposite.
So the 60 days gives them time to apply with the village for a liquor and gaming license, and if it's turned down, they can decide to...
They would have that right.
Disconnect. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Another question, for annexation, is it a simple majority or supermajority?
Supermajority.
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 And for liquor and gaming, it's a simple majority?
Simple majority.
I guess which brings us to, it's pretty obvious why they're going for the split vote. Maybe they feel that they'll be able to get more votes from the board if it's just simple annexation, as opposed to combining all three. I'm assuming that all board members realize this, correct? That's, that's good. In response to the gentleman who spoke, that he lives obviously south of 183rd Street, where, they are kind of on our border, they are definitely on our border. I think this issue has brought people from south side of Tinley, north side, east and west, to stand together in saying that, at least think about this, is this right for our village? Is this right for the folks who live there and are directly affected every single day by this? It's, you know, I'm not, I live literally in the center of Tinley Park, so no, I'm not affected. But it concerns me because even though they may be considerably south of me, they're still my neighbor. It still affects them, and if I were living there, would I want that? No. So, I'd ask that you put yourself in their shoes, and if you lived there, how would you feel? You know, just bring that into consideration, even though they're south side, we're still one Tinley Park, all of us, no matter where we live in this village. We're all neighbors, whether it's, we're three miles from each other or three houses from each other. So please, take that into consideration when you do vote, because obviously, supermajority tonight, but a simple majority for the gaming and liquor. Stated previously, and I witnessed it, that they're not interested in annexing in unless they can have their gaming. The end result is that's what they want, and they've divided their requests at this point, so they can get their annexation in, even to the point where they can opt out if they don't get their liquor and gaming within 60 days. So, not only, obviously you guys all know that, but I wanted the rest of the village to realize that that is their plan. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Sandy Rennie. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. So, there was a question asked by one of our neighbors here, would Mr. McEnery want to do this if he didn't have the liquor and the gaming online? And so I would say, when asked at the Tinley Park Planning Commission hearing in March, if Mr. McEnery would still want to annex into Tinley if the gaming and liquor special use permits were denied, he clearly stated, no comment. So, we clearly know why he's seeking his annexation. As if this annexation were to pass, as previously stated, he would be eligible to directly apply to the state, as we've said, and the gaming board, and then a liquor license, of course, would follow, bypassing our concerns and our village board votes given what this lady just brought up. We therefore strongly appeal to our village board, you our elected officials, to add an amendment to this, to this annexation tonight, stating that no gaming or liquor will be allowed on this property, as you previously stated for Speedway in 2015. That agreement was previously voted on by some of the trustees that were present here tonight, as we know. We must understand that our village may face a future lawsuit from Speedway as a precedent has already been set, given they were denied these special uses for annexation a few years ago. Also, there's currently, as we said before, no gas station which is adjacent to single-family homes in our village, and that was done for a reason. You're, the mayor and the people who came before you set these ordinances to protect all the people, and I think those really need to be followed, and I hope that you can agree with me on that. I am therefore giving you some legal objections to this annexations which were signed by residents who live within that 300 feet of this current station. We have some more at home, I'm sorry, I have a lot of folders, but anyway. A few months ago, no votes for the special use permits of gaming and liquor did not pass this village planning commission. So if this McEnery annexation proposal is continuing without that safeguard of an amendment, what is the rationale for even having the village planning commission regarding their research and their votes, to begin with? You've already heard from our neighbors how this traffic from this station currently affects us. We talked about the stacking of cars, one of my neighbors is late tonight, she was late driving home, and she was going to give you a better visual of how that happens, but I can just say to you, as a grandmother, I drive my grandchildren in the morning to schools, and I go down, I live on 194th, and that's where I go, and we are stacked up just by the Dunkin' Donuts, if you will, which is fine, we have to live with this, but do we have to live with double that? I don't think so, and that's what we're looking at tonight, and we hope you can see that that's what we're saying here. The safety and those things are a major thing. Here's another thing. Although, in the past, Mr. McEnery's team talked about how he went further and had a berm, a wall, and some landscaping, he mentioned that before, there's no soundproof landscaping. The wall is plastic and does not contain the noise levels. And of course, it has previously been mentioned by the Tinley ordinance 98.02, it prohibits noise after 10 until 7:00 a.m. as protection for nearby residents. So, will his truck refueling be closed to traffic during those hours? Is he going to close that down and will police reinforce that if that's going to be, are we going to change ordinances again? And his car wash opens at 6:00 in the morning, so will that be moved to 7:00, so it'll be in compliance with our ordinances? Just a thought. What proof is there regarding Mr. McEnery's proposed incomes for this annexation? According to the attorneys, his projected number of $400,000 was an estimate given by Mr. McEnery, given his business background, thus, not an independent source at all. Astonishingly, as reported earlier, the share specific to his Mokina station gaming in 2017 was only $85,967, that was from the Illinois Gaming Board, which we also found very interesting. So will this be a Pandora's Box for gas stations throughout our village? And of course, these special use permits are not even on this agenda tonight. Also, as previously stated, over the last six years, 700 residents have signed petitions opposing liquor and gaming for this station, and as taxpayers, we hope history will not repeat itself, as our fears of increased traffic, crime, and safety issues facing all our residents, or one accident involving a child in our community cannot be overlooked. And of course, our teens will be very vulnerable to gaming without any supervision or someone to check IDs, just like they do in casinos. Lastly, the sign, and this is confusing to me, which was on display at Mr. McEnery's station for the last four months following that planning commission hearing, which stated, public hearing, was somehow taken down within the last month, last week, and we're saying, that was really curious. And I called the village to ask why it was taken down, given our meeting here tonight, and I was told that the sign was only for planning commission meetings. I don't know. I truly was surprised, as more residents would probably have attended tonight if it were available. So you've heard about the past mayors of Brock, the all the different mayors and different boards who've supported our community in these ordinances that we currently have. Ultimately, you must therefore consider the moral, the ethical, and the choices made for our future health, safety, and welfare of all of this community, and how it will directly affect us and the property values. Our values, as you know, even with the station going up, well, we'll just say, they are not the same. And we pay a lot of taxes on that end of the south side of Tinley. We have supported Tinley throughout. We moved here to Tinley for that reason, because it is a wonderful village to belong to. We support you and we expect, but I'm a past school board president, so I know that some of these decisions are very difficult for some of you, but you have to stand up for what you believe in. I'm also a past educator and I had history classes, and that's the one thing I used to tell my students, stand up for what you believe in, and we're here to tell you, this is what we believe in, and we hope you can hear us on that end. We therefore strongly appeal to you, say no to this annexation without that amendment first, no gaming, no liquor, we're with you on that game, you let them annex in, it's a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
So I'm the late one. My name is Charlotte Harrington, I live two doors down from the gas station, and I'll just tell you that the car wash is piercing for the vacuums, just your ears are pierced, the entire time is turned on. But that's how I'm here, I was actually here to talk about traffic and noise, but that's been covered, and my son doesn't know this, I get really emotional, but he's working on his Eagle Scout. His citizenship in the community badge was going to the Will County versions of all these meetings three, four years ago. He has been in these meetings since he's been a Boy Scout, and he's just watching government roll over and over and over and over for everything we stand for in the neighborhood as, as community members, and not wanting liquor, not wanting gambling, and every time we turn around, these poor kids are looking like, what the heck, why even, why does anybody bother voicing their opinion if it's just going to keep being the same stuff different day? And I just hope you guys really think about how long we have been fighting liquor and gaming, when you're voting for this, and do the amendment thing before annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I was on the planning commission when the McEnery station came on board to be looked at for the various variances and deviations. I do have one question for the attorney. If the state law says a truck stop can have gaming, you're saying that you guys want to pass a local ordinance to try and button up our local ordinance on gaming, who takes precedent? Does the state law take precedent, which he can apply to, or does the local law or ordinance take precedent?
It's my understanding that the state works like this. If you, if the local jurisdiction requires some video gaming permit, the state will not give them the state license. And I think, I think what I had heard earlier was that maybe the state looked at ours and saw something missing about truck stops, we'll look into that. But my understanding, and I spoke into the state about this, and that's, you know, everything that I've known about it, if there is a requirement that they have to get a local video gaming license, and they cannot get that, then the state will not issue that license.
Does that open up us, though, to a potential lawsuit? Because if this annexation happens tonight...
Well, it can't happen tonight, it's only first reading tonight.
Okay, if it happens, when's the next reading?
The next meeting.
Next meeting, when's the next meeting?
Three weeks.
A month, yeah.
August.
August.
22nd.
Okay, so let's say between now and then, we don't do anything about it, you can't do anything about it because you're not going to have any meetings before August 22nd.
We could call a special meeting, but even on the same, granted, I see your point.
We can debate this on...
I see your point.
You see my point. I also find it really interesting, council came up here tonight and said, you know, you guys can have more control, you have control over the signs, we're going to follow all your signs. One of the primary reasons why the planning commission rejected, in my opinion, Mr. McEnery and the station, is because we offered that to him at the very first reading, when he came before the planning commission, we explained to him, we have a new sign ordinance, you've been warned by the mayors, previous mayors, previous trustee, about going outside those, at that time, the sign standards. If we were to do this, we expect you to come in full compliance with all the other signs, we'll let the monument signs stay, even though they're outside of compliance, but everything else was to come within compliance. He understood that from the get-go, his attorney understood that from the get-go, it was made very clear to them. Yet they came back, time and time again to the board, when they finally came back, and utterly rebuked what we had told them, said that, listen, we'll do this and this, but we won't do this. I sometimes don't understand counsel, and I don't understand the petitioner, when it's made very clear to them by the recommended body to the board, that has to get through to us, through us, before it comes to you, with a recommendation or a vote against. When it's made clear to them, the messages made clear to them, and they still decide not to do it, so I kind of find that ironic that the attorney would come up here and say what he said tonight. In addition, I'm hearing the number from council now of $300,000 to the town, a projected revenue. When it came to us, it was over $400,000. Mysteriously, it's gone down 25%. I don't understand what's going on, it's again, my concern about this thing is that we're being told numbers that are not substantiated, undocumented, when we tried to do it in the planning commission, we were shut down, probably rightfully so, because we were talking about it, and talking about a man's business in a public entity. But no one, while I was on the planning commission, was able to show me this $400,000 windfall the town was going to get. The petitioner refused the planning commission's recommendation or request to coincide with our sign ordinance, with his signs, absolutely refused to do it, offered us some small pieces while taking the rest of the sign ordinance for granted, talked about putting in two truck parking places and a truck stop, which is what now this would be considered as a truck stop, even though one of the truck stop, or one of the truck parking positions that they would paint, would actually impede upon the egress and ingress of the, of the driving lanes next to the pumps. In other words, if you've got two trucks at those two pumps, and you've got two trucks parked where they're talking about parking, you cannot get two semi-trailers side by side into and out of at the same time. There's simply not enough room there, guys, Ms. Berg, there's simply not enough room there. I hope that you take a good look at everything and all the facts. I hear the residents, no one is saying that it's wrong to have a... I hear the residents, no one is, is saying that it's wrong to have a, a gas station there, that's wrong to have a car wash there. They understand, it's there, it's not moving. That's not a matter of dispute here. That's already been disputed, both at the county board level, as well as through the courts. So you know that Mr. McHenry and his team are not against going to courts to try and get their way. That's why, in my opinion, you follow the plan commission's recommendation, and you reject what is being asked for you today, unless we place the same amendment on this annexation agreement that you did to Speedway. Because you can't be arbitrary in enforcing one and not the other. I just don't see how you can do that without opening yourself up to another lawsuit. And God knows, we don't need another lawsuit in this village. You all know that, we all know that. So, again, if you're going to do this to the next step, and you're gonna take it to the annexation, please put the same amendment that you put in the Speedway annexation agreement and make it impossible for the petitioner to get that gaming license. That's all that we're asking for. Thank you.
Hi, guys, I'm Adrian. Keep in mind, I did call the gaming board. They also let me know, if they get, if they're named a truck stop, they don't need you to get a gaming license. Please confirm that before you do the voting. Please.
I realize there's a number of issues, sir, and I'm simply a trustee annexation issue. One of Tinley Park's land use members, in his rejection, described in a nutshell, why ask for the problems? Tinley Park's own land use board voted to deny his request. The annexation issue is a can of worms this board does not want to open. I understand there are revenue issues, but there are also culpability issues to the village, to trustees, and us taxpayers. Why? From the beginning, in 2012, most of the plans were rejected. A Frankfurt Township Board voted not to approve or deny. B, Tinley Park, and some of this, I, I realize is repeats, but Tinley Park objected, objected in particular to the truck fueling station. C, Frankfurt Township voted to deny. Bill Carlson, Bill Carlson, Frankfurt Township's Highway Road Commissioner, said no to the plans. And in my opinion, that's a smoking gun in a lawsuit. Should there be a major accident, or injury, or something that requires legal action attributed to the use of the facility, here's a Commissioner of Roads expressing safety concerns before this thing was built. E, Tinley Park's land use, Will County's land use, and Will County Board voted to deny Each one of these issued verbal and written statements that there were safety issues among many objections before a shovel of dirt was moved. Before anything was moved, everybody, most everybody objected to it. So why was it built? It was built because there's a loophole in the zoning laws, which the county has now The zoning allowed for a gas station and convenience store, basic mom-pop business. Petitioner, knowing the objections and safety warnings, went ahead and built its truck stop anyway. And as mentioned, to be clear, this is a truck stop by state definition, not just an auto fueling station. Someone once said, you can put lipstick on the pig, it's still a pig. Let me put it into another perspective. He pulled permits for a candy store and built a Walmart. By annexation, I believe Tinley Park accepts the risks associated with these warnings, and could be found culpable if it ignores all the warnings and approves an annexation. Ignoring safety warnings can and would lead to major toward award that petitioner would simply file bankruptcy to avoid, leaving the village of Tinley Park, the trustees, and us taxpayers holding it back. There are rewards associated with this annexation request, but the risk, the can of worms, the why ask for the problems outweigh these rewards. Reminds me of an old saying, and I'm an old guy, penny wise and a pound foolish. It's not a matter of if an accident or incident will happen at the facility, it's a matter of when and how serious. Right now, the only entity that is at risk for recourse is the petitioner, and based on all the written objections prior to building his facility, I think attorneys would be lined up for miles asking to represent the injured. Don't allow the village the risk of being a defendant. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. So I'll reframe back to, thank you for your comments, sir. I'd reframe back to my previous statement. If there's anything new that you'd like to add to the public record, we'd certainly like to hear it. But again, for the purposes of keeping the meeting moving, it's closing in an hour. We have, do have a village board meeting at seven-thirty. Guys, that you please, please refrain from re, you know, doing any redundancies. Mr. Shaw.
Greetings, President Vanderburgh, trustees. For the record, my name's Ken Shaw. I am chairman of Tinley Park's Plan Commission. And on that note, I'd like to say thank you for being reappointed President Vanderburgh. I forward to continuing to serve the village. I'd also like to congratulate trustee Kern on his recent appointment, and thank you for your time on the Plan Commission. That being said, as Plan Commission Chairman, I presided over the public hearings on this matter, so I'm, I'm very well-versed in the subject. However, tonight, I'm addressing the board solely as a citizen of Tinley Park, not in any official capacity. And to President Vanderburgh's point about new information, I, I will respect that. There's one point that I would like to bring up, is that this evening, the petitioner's attorney brought up the boundary agreements, and went on at length about the boundary agreement to set the record straight on the timing of events. I would also like to state that early on in our workshops and public hearings, I brought up also the boundary agreements. And no, at no point within those meetings did the petitioner even mention those until I brought them up. So with respect to that being a very significant point in this matter, I would just ask that you, if you have not already, there's a tremendous amount of public record on this already, that's the role of the Plan Commission. I would ask that before any votes are taken on this, you go back and review the record on not only that point, but on all the points. So, to that end, I'm just gonna cut to the chase on it and say that as a private citizen, I ask that you consider approving annexation only on the conditions that the property meet the current village codes with respect to signage, landscaping, sound, operation, hours of operation, and any other codes for which any existing property or business would have to comply. And I further ask that you model your annexation agreement on the Eightieth Avenue Speedway annexation, on which Speedway voluntarily agreed to forego a gaming license for, I believe thirty years. I heard this evening that it was...
It's twenty.
In perpetuity.
It's twenty years, I'm reading it right now.
It's what?
It's twenty years.
Twenty years, okay. At a minimum, I think that that, again, there's a precedent set, we don't want to have, you know, a different Tinley Park for different businesses. So in the interest of time, I'm gonna, again, continue to cut to the, to the chase here. At the Plan Commission's hearing, trustee Kern rightly stated that the village would have greater control if the property were annexed. However, we've heard several points this evening about where that may, in fact, not be the case, and as well, additional testimony about how having control would also bring, could also bring additional liability for the village. One, one thing I would say is, I'm not opposed to annexation out of hand. However, I am opposed to giving what I would call blanket immunity to a business for all of our existing codes. Thank you.
Okay, there's nothing else in the public? We appreciate you coming up and speaking out towards your concerns and issues. Is there a rebuttal or a final? Just, let's keep it brief, sir, if you could. We do have a closed session that we need to attend to prior to our board meetings.
Understood. I just wanted to hit some points in the public hearing, because they were brought up, and make a few corrections. First of all, with regard to vote levels and vote requirements, annexing a property itself, that is adoption of the annexation ordinance, requires only a simple majority. It's only the approval of an annexation agreement, which is a separate vote, requires the supermajority, correct, counsel?
That's correct.
That's one thing. No one's here demanding anything. This village board doesn't have to annex, and no one can force it to annex anything and doesn't want to annex. So there's no one demanding anything. And with regard to the comments about simply being able to walk in tomorrow if this were granted tonight, I know it's not going to be, nothing's gonna happen as far as the vote tonight, first read only. But to be able to just walk in and pick up a license of this state, that's not understanding, that's not our understanding in talking to counsel. It was always our understanding, that in the future, if we were to want that, that that would have to take action, the village board. That's our understanding from the get-go. Regarding the comments about the trucks, the trucks are here. With regard to fuel sales, that somehow, if the village doesn't annex this, that, or the village did annex it, that fuel sales would suddenly go through the roof. We'd like that to be the case, but nothing physically is changing with the station itself, the number of pumps, et cetera, which would cause that. Sales tax on a fuel, and there were some comments about this, and some statements, I believe by Ms. Rennie, that there was only eight-five thousand coming out of the Mokina Station. That was gambling revenue, okay? Gaming revenue?
Second.
If I could, my floor, I believe.
Again, just address the board, please.
And gaming revenue. And when I said three-hundred thousand dollars, that was cutting out the property tax, because as you know, village gets a very small civil property tax, and cutting out gaming revenue to go from that four-hundred thousand number, all of these are verifiable, and where we got them from, from the Illinois Department of Revenue, okay? That is to the sales tax revenue, regarding that. The other thing I want to say is that, in Ms. Charlotte, I believe it is Harrington, made a point, and staying, making complaints about the noise levels coming from the car wash. We did put in a quieter type of dryer, it was the intent with automatic closing door, but this is, again, is another example where the village has performance standards that the county doesn't have. And when we get talk about majority votes and non-majority votes, in the county, the county could, by simple majority, grant a special use permit to allow liquor, it could grant a liquor license by simple majority. So you're not saving anything there. And additionally, I'd like to make this point with regard to the testimony, both Ms. Arnold, and then there was a fellow later who didn't give his entire name, with regard to the testimony of Mr. Bill Carlson, the township, Highway Commissioner for Frankfurt Township. Ms. Arnold and Mr. Carlson had their opportunity to testify before the court. In fact, the court said in its ruling after hearing her, the court observes that nearly all the witnesses testified with convincing credibility, with the exception of Mr. Carlson and Ms. Arnold. Their testimony, on reading from the opinion, rather seemed to lack a sound and articulable factual basis. Their stated concerns were speculative and anecdotal.
If you could wrap it up, sir, I can just keep away from the personal attacks. Mr. McHenry?
Hi, I'm Lynn McHenry. I'm the owner of Gas and Wash. At one point, on the, the signs that we didn't follow, previous mayors and, and the planning board, it was stated to us in the beginning of this process that all the signs come as is. So I kind of said to myself, who's, who's, who's making the decisions here? Is, is it the board, or is it the people on the planning board? So, and then we followed staff with, with making some changes on the signs. So it didn't go unnoticed, but they, they wanted the new sign ordinance, and then we're also being told that, it was read to us, that the signs come as is, with being annexed in. Okay, just that point. Okay. We, we currently have ten locations, they're neighborhood businesses, we have eight liquor licenses, and five gaming licenses. In a local village bias, coming soon, the village is granting us two liquor licenses and, and a gaming license. Okay, so we're, we're well experienced in, in the operation and all facets of the business, okay? I've been in it my whole life, and most of our people have been, been in it for, for a long time. This location has, has sixty employees, I think we went over the revenues, three-hundred, four-hundred, with potential gaming. We've been open for a couple of years, zero problems, zero problems in the other, in the other nine locations. These places don't bring problems. I get a little irritated when I hear all the negativity, which try to irritate you guys. I think it's wrong, okay? State the facts. Yeah, you might have find a time out there when there was five trucks, but I can pull it up on my phone right now, let's see how many trucks were out there. You guys have all been there, you see what the facility is like, it's not like what they, what they make it out to be. I think that's unfair.
It's residential.
Okay. We also had three thousand signatures from customers when, when we opened, for people that wanted additional services. But to me, enough, enough, enough is of this stuff, okay? You know, we can, we can, we can go back and forth, and, you know, we got more than you got, you know, we're gonna go get some more. I don't think you guys want, you know, it's just like you don't want me up here burning up your time. So, they said it before, place is there, we're gonna be there, it's all gonna be the same tomorrow, and I hope you support us. Thanks.
I got a question, real quick, Mr. McHenry?
The, one of the residents spoke about the gaming being in the, in the view of everything, when the kids and stuff go in there. What's your, what's your plan with, if you do decide to do gaming?
To put it in a separate room. Put it, to put it, to put walls up around it when you come in, you don't see it.
So it's not visible?
Correct.
I think by law, don't you have to have walls, some kind of walls?
It's a partition. It's a partition.
It goes all the way from the road to...
I think for the purposes of separating the two requests, this meeting is focused on annexation, and I'm positive that all the, to that specific, that will all be flushed out when the request comes forward.
No, no, I just...
Oh, yeah, no, I know, it's, it's good for a point.
Because it was mentioned, and it was ahead of my note.
I don't disagree with you, no.
I have one other question for you. The, the hours of operation for your car wash, if you did annex in for the car wash, do you have a problem with the, with the hours of operation not being twenty-four-seven?
The car wash isn't twenty-four-seven.
What is it, then?
Six, six AM to ten PM.
Any other questions, trustee Ross?
Thank you.
Very good. Well, again, I appreciate everyone coming out for the public hearing, I appreciate the petitioner coming forward this evening for a little cross-examination. Three points that I thought that, that came out of the concerns from residents, as well as some that were addressed. Somebody mentioned that there would be twenty-four-hour liquor sales. I do not believe that that is a request, nor that, that the end would entertain, so just to clarify the record on that. Two, that there are another gas stations in Tinley Park that sell packaged liquor, and that is not true. Shell Gas Station at one-hundred fifty-ninth and Eighty-Fourth Avenue sells liquor, packaged liquor, pardon me. And three, it was also mentioned that there was several members of the board that voted for the Speedway annexation, and I just want for a point of clarification for the record, that I did abstain from that as a trustee. So those are the three things I took. Again, I really appreciate everyone coming out tonight, speaking your opinions, giving us, the board, all of your concerns and issues. And on that note, I would ask...
Can I have one more question, please, before you close it?
Sure.
Were you done?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. The, how about the truck fueling? Do you have a, would you have a problem with the hours on truck fueling? If it wasn't, say, if it was closed for a certain point in the middle of the night, or no? or no? But just a...
Probably, because I think, I think we're looking for more trouble with the truck coming there, place is closed, you know? I don't think, I don't think that's happening.
All right. If there's nothing else, then I'd ask for a motion to either close or continue this public hearing. Is there a motion to close public hearing? It's moved by Mr. Plots? Was it moved by, sorry? Is there a second?
Second.
A second to close?
Second.
Second by trustee Brady. This is a rule?
Oh, whatever.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Thank you. Item two is to receive comments from the public. I think we've received a lot of comments from the public tonight regarding this, this special board meeting. Is there anybody that'd like to address the board? Let the record...
We'll have another chance. What's the next step?
Well, the next step is we're gonna have a village board meeting, which is gonna follow this closed session. This is just for our special village board meeting, which would have been testimony of what you just spoke about. Is there something other than information that you were looking for, ma'am?
No, are you closing public comments now?
We're, we're closing the public hearing for the annexation. We're gonna go into a closed session, the board is, and then we're gonna open up our regular village board meeting, which was supposed to be set at 7:30. And there will be an opportunity for public comment at that point as well.
I guess, and I guess to clarify for everybody here, so when we come back, there are items on the agenda to be voted on tonight. It's a first reading, okay? So it cannot be approved finally tonight. The first item that the board will take up is the annexation agreement. If that doesn't receive the supermajority, and well, I'll talk about a little bit, little bit more when the, when the vote comes up, but, so it could fail tonight, but it cannot be approved tonight. So if it gets the enough votes, we move on to second reading at the next meeting. I hope that clarifies the question.
Counselor kindly. So I'll move on to item three, then. It asks for a motion adjourned to executive session, discuss the following. A, the appointment, appointment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. And B, litigation when action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes. Is there a motion?
Some moves?
Second.
Second and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. We're gonna be in closed session, and we'll be back to start our regular village board meeting. Appreciate your patience. Thank you very much.